Good morning and welcome to the June 4th Commission meeting. If you'd stand and I'll lead you in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick reminder to silence your cell phones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over there in the black binder. And if you need a listening device, you can see Robert here up front. We'll go right into routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
Boy, you guys are in a hurry this morning. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I would like to make a, just an addendum and combine seven C and fifteen together into seven C, if you will.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item two.
Item two are approved county commission minutes of five twenty-eight twenty thirteen and the joint minutes of five twenty-eight twenty thirteen.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any corrections or changes? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents.
Pay the bills with a comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second with a comment. Mr. Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today's bills include purchasing five patrol cars for the sheriff's department at just under twenty-two thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars in large construction things for the highway department, and eight hundred and seven thousand dollars in debt service, which happens here and there. And additionally, I guess we had four months' worth of bills for the mobile crisis team, which was about ten grand a month.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
I'll move routine action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
And a B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for June 2013. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. I have two items for you today. The first is to recognize the significant employee anniversaries. And we have, I think, the first time I've ever seen forty years of service. So we'd like to congratulate Norma Erickson and the treasurer's office. It's my understanding that she is not present today, but wherever you are, Norma, we thank you for that. John Harris, who's a deputy sheriff sergeant in the sheriff's office, also celebrating a significant anniversary at twenty-five years. I have not seen John either. Okay. David Aswell from Facilities is a groundkeeper for us, celebrating twenty years of service. And I don't believe he's with us either. Julie Ellis Brew from the museum, however, celebrating twenty years of service is with us. So congratulations, Julie. I don't know if you want to say a few words. Did I put your name on that?
Thank you so much. I really enjoyed my tenure here at the Justice Tommy. It's a great place to work and of course I love working with the museum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
And then we also have Doreen Jansen, who's a correctional officer at the jail, also celebrating fifteen years with us, so arguing congratulations to her as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item C is to recognize volunteers in county government for May 2013.
Again this morning, I have a very long list, over two hundred volunteers for May, so our sincere thanks goes to them.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll go to item six.
Item six is application for abatement. Diane Ripma.
Good morning. Diane Ripma, Deputy Director of Equalization. Parcel number two-two-one-one-zero is requesting an abatement for seven hundred and three dollars and sixty-one cents. The property became one hundred percent exempt October first of 2012.
Any questions for Diane? Do we have a motion for, and a second?
Motion to approve the abatement.
Second.
Motion to approve the abatement and a second. Any other comments, questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Diane.
Item seven are notices and requests. A, a notice from the South Dakota Department of Health of disinterment/reinterment permit issued for the remains of Alyssa Hawke. Item B is a notice from the Sioux Falls area CASA program of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle to support CASA program, the drawing to be held on July 5th, 2013. And item C is a notice from the Sioux Falls J.C.'s of an intent to conduct a fundraising raffle on July 4th, 2013, at the annual firework celebration on the W.H. Lyon Fairgrounds.
Thank you. Amy, Amy was here. She took off. Any questions about those? If not, I'd like to invite Travis to come forward and discuss item seven C. Ken, do you have some comments?
Commissioner, on the two notices for the raffle, that is really, they don't require any action on your part, and that those are strictly notices pursuant to state law, that these organizations are going to conduct a fundraising raffle. And the only time it becomes an issue is if you have an objection. And I have yet to see that happen in my tenure here, but these are just simply notices posted for public information.
Thank you, Ken. I'd like to go to item seven C, if we would, and fifteen is what I meant to say, which we replaced with, in place of seven C, so. Good morning, Travis.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to meet. Again, I have the Sioux Falls J.C.'s.
Can you set the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sorry. This will be our forty-sixth annual event. Last year, we had an estimated twelve thousand people on or at the fairgrounds. And who knows how many were in the parking lot? And all around. And this is the only fireworks show that is free for the public of Sioux Falls. it needs to be paid for. So we always do our annual fundraising effort. This year this year, we have had a little less than normal come forward. So far. and just not only gave moral support but also monetary support. We've seen many other companies follow your lead. I would just like to ask for any support at all. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Travis. Any questions for Travis or his assistant? I'm sorry, we didn't get your name.
I'm Gina.
Hi Gina.
Yep.
Any questions for Travis or Gina?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
I would just make the remark that while it probably is not this commission that's going to be able to support this, this year, that perhaps those in the community that are observing this discussion today can step forward and help Travis and the J.C.'s with funding those fireworks. And hopefully, it'll be a nicer day than today, than today on the Fourth of July. But it has been a tradition in our community for my whole tenure in this city, and I certainly hope that they can go forward, but, and I will be making a personal contribution, but that won't cover the whole cost.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I think that last year, we came up with a number that I think was, yeah, appropriate, and I'd like to make a motion that we contribute again. Five thousand, I believe, is what we gave last year, and so I'd like to make that motion again.
We have a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? Motion dies for the lack of a second. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I think last year, we made it pretty clear that we were going to help them last year, but it was a one-time deal, and I think that message was conveyed to them clearly. I guess I just, you know, we've made, we've gone through this, what, three years in a row now, and I think somewhere, they just have to, their planning has to be a year out for getting the next year's deal, and I won't support anything this year.
If not, the motion dies for lack of a second. We do appreciate your efforts in getting here this morning, and we also appreciate the fact that you've been a leader in making that happen. I know that the Grand Falls Casino, I think, has stepped up, and hopefully, that partnership, along with business partnerships, will support your efforts again. And at some point, if you need additional conversations with us, the budget process that we have won't be here until the event is over, but maybe we can reconsider it next year, frankly, when that budget is put together. So Travis, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you for all your support.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll go back to item number eight, under regular business, which are, under new business planning and zoning notices. Pat Herman. Oh, there are none. Sorry, Pat. There are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
If anyone has any comments that they'd like to make about any topic that's not on the agenda, they are welcome to come forward, identify themselves, and we'd be happy to hear from you. Good morning.
Good morning. Most of you know me. You're getting used to seeing me here. I bet you can guess why I'm here.
Unfortunately, we still need your name, Sandy. Can't be completely hidden.
I am Sandy Dean. I live in Hartford, South Dakota. I trust you all received my snail mail letter on Monday, or maybe today. I won't bet on whether you read it or not. I have served six years on the Suland Heritage Museum Board and have recently been elected to the Minnehaha County Historical Society and edit their newsletter. Forty-two years of business of antiques, I have a lot of experience with collections and storage. I do, I do not represent anyone or any society except myself today. I would like to, to note that, we would like to thank Julie for her fifteen years of service at the museum. And I think it's wholly appropriate that when she comes back from Belgium, the collection center is up and running. I'm here to remind you of the need for the new Suland Heritage Museum's collection center to be located at the corner of Northwest Port Avenue and Fifty-Fourth Street, on the million-dollar piece of land donated by Bob and Cory Hall for that express purpose. You may be aware of the long list of questions presented by the mayor's office since the joint committee meeting last Tuesday, as well as the mayor's remarks in the article in the Argus on Sunday. The short answers, in my personal opinion, are that the homework has already been done time and time again, and turned in on time every time. The museum board will be providing answers to them yet again, sooner than later. The new facility is the only physically suitable and financially responsible choice. It is the only answer for the relief of the structural strain on the old Courthouse Museum, while giving the artifacts the climate controls they need to extend their longevity, while being totally accessible to the public and in the most efficient plan to serve future needs as well. The location needs to be the Hall property, if for no other reason than out of respect for the generous gift. That location is more than suitable for the facility's purposes of collection, storage, and research, and takes the strain off the area surrounding the OCM, which can concentrate then on further restoration and some expanded exhibit and rental space. The old Courthouse Museum is only part of the Suland Heritage Museums after all, with preservation and education as its prime missions. It does not exist purely as a downtown Sioux Falls tourist attraction, although it does that very well. The housing of the Genealogy Society will give hours of free human resources, and very little if any increases will be needed for county employees. Those questions have also been asked and answered a dozen times, and Bill Hoskins and the board have proven their willingness and ability to adjust to times of personnel and financial constraints. I would expect this county commission will see the wisdom in rewarding Bill and the dedicated staff for their successes in making do, instead of punishing them, as the mayor seeks to do, by withholding forward change because they have managed to make do so far. I propose it is that kind of thinking that has left the unsupplied, paid-up members of Lewis and Clark without good water, while Washington fails to hold up their end of the deal. I would implore this commission to use all the power and influence at your disposal to lead the city of Sioux Falls to the only respectable decision regarding the collection center. That decision is to pony up the city's one-third of the collections portion of the building and half of the operations with implementation to begin ASAP. It is the only decision that respects and serves the best interests of the citizens of the entire Suland Heritage area, citizens in and outside of Sioux Falls, both above and below the ground, from the past and into the future. Art and history are sport and rec, too. In the city, if the city chooses to neglect the history of Minnehaha County, including the old Courthouse Museum, whose image they use for their own aggrandizement when it suits them, the county needs to go forward without them. The museums will provide all it can, including sale of some of the land, and we are sure to find some private support. Building an extra area for the county and judicial records will fill that desperate need and save money now spent on storage that can be used to operate a much more secure situation. I really believe the city owes the county for one point seven million dollars in dirt they mined off the Hall property for the sports fields if they back out of this deal. Thank you. Oh, and if that whole green community thing comes up in Hartford again, that is a disaster looking for a place to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Barth.
Would you mind if I made some comments on that issue?
Go right ahead.
Well, basically, you know, we did get this questionnaire from the city, and, you know, that has been, this issue has been hashed around for years. And the storage facility basically is a plan to, for, to put artifacts and items from the past, the present, and the future. It's a multi-generational effort to preserve our heritage. But the questions that we got from the city administration, there's a certain amount of either ignorance or chippiness about them. And I would just call your attention to a question here, you know, can we add on to the existing facility in some way to take advantage of? You know, I don't think so. I mean, it's in the floodplain. Meanwhile, the pedigree, of course, we could demolish a few of the buildings in the area and build a nice nineteen-seventies-style building or something. But I just don't see that as being a rational or reasonable question, and certainly, the bureaucrat that came up with this list apparently is looking for every, every angle to dismiss it without using any, any effort at trying to work with us. I commend Sandy for coming to today's meeting. It's a pleasure to serve with her on the board at the museum, and certainly, she has a fire in her belly about this issue, and I think some others do as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, Jeff and I are on that, on that task force, or advisory committee, whatever it was. I don't agree with Jeff. I think there were some pertinent questions asked in that thing that should have been asked at our committee meetings and weren't. I think particularly that, that first question about the need for about, what was it, eighty-eight, I haven't got it in front of me, but something like eighty-eight hundred square feet of additional storage to compensate for the area that we're using up in the attic, and this had twenty-nine thousand, and, you know, they were legitimate questions. Some of them are a little trite, I think, but generally, I think they were legitimate questions that should be answered when you're asking for the county and the city to cough up a humegon three each and, and put this facility. It's more than, it's more than a storage facility. It has the administrative, it has some research in there, and it has a huge amount of storage, which is climate-controlled. It's a nice facility. I, I question, though, at, at the price tag we're looking at, where originally, and they've got twenty acres, I can't remember the numbers, was it twenty acres of land they can sell off and still keep five? And there's pretty good value to those acreages, and they might be able, through that whole process, to, to be able to fund themselves, fund what they need themselves. We're in a position, I think the city had, you know, everybody's got its allocation of monies in their CIP, and, but I hate to say that, that, I think the mayor had a lot of questions, and those questions were posed. And since he's going to put together the budget for the city, I think he had a legitimate right to ask them.
May I respond? I would like to hold this to just conversations, because we agreed, I think, many months ago, that this would be part of our capital improvement program and not a debatable issue in open conversations. We're happy to hear from the public, but we can bring some of that information to the CIP hearing, but if you've got additional comments, now listen to them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do agree with Dick, and there are certainly reasonable questions in there, and the idea of building a facility larger than is necessary to store our current artifacts is a reasonable question. However, we are acquiring more items all the time, and when, you know, we built the events facility, or as we're building it, we're not building it for the population we have today, we're building it for the future. Otherwise, we could get along with the arena. So the idea that, I think that's a reasonable question. I think that hopefully, the answer will be clear. On the other hand, some of the other questions, I think, are, and I'm not sure that I would attribute them to the mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Sandy, again, thank you for coming. Again, just to reiterate, that we will be addressing the capital improvement options, if you will, at the budget hearings in a few weeks. This will be one of at least four or five that I think have been proposed, and like everything else, we will prioritize those and decide how we're going to handle it. But thank you for your input at this point, and I'm sure we'll hear from you again in that process. Any other comments, questions in the public session? Without seeing anyone moving forward, we'll go to the next item.
Routine or regular business, public hearing to consider vacating the public right-of-way described as Edgeview Court, lying between Lot Two, Block Five, Sorum subdivision, Lot One, Block Four A, Sorum subdivision, and Track Four, Sorum's addition, all in Section Nine Township, One-O-Two North, Range Forty-Nine West. Dustin Powers.
Morning, Dustin.
Morning, Commissioner. Dustin Powers with the County Planning Department. Today, we're looking at a petition from Jason Erickson to vacate Edgeview Court in Renner, South Dakota. The street right-of-way was platted in the night, early nineteen-seventies and has never been constructed. The vacation of the right-of-way would eliminate an issue with a building that is currently built in that right-of-way. Also, the property, surrounding property owners wish to replat the properties that would eliminate issues with the driveway to the neighboring property to the south, as well as a propane tank for one of the residences that is on the farm ground to the northwest. So by vacating this and allowing the replating of these properties would solve some of the issues that are currently with ownership of the buildings and propane driveways, the issues that are out there with just where things were constructed and not on the subject property that they should have been at the time. The vacation would not landlock any of the surrounding properties. As you can see on the map, the Maple Groves Farm would still have access off of Lindbergh Avenue via Edgeview Court over here. Also, they have access off of Four Hundred Seventy-Fifth Avenue, which is also South Dakota Highway One-Fifteen. The two residences would still also have access off of Lindbergh Avenue. So we're not landlocking any parcels by allowing the vacation of this roadway. South Dakota codified law requires that a legal notice be published two consecutive weeks. The notice for this hearing date today was published on May thirteenth and May twentieth, in which scheduled the meeting here at this time. Vacation of the Edgeview Court would not landlock any of the parcels or properties subject to using Edgeview Court, and therefore, the planning department is recommending approval of this vacation. So action today would need to be taken to approve or deny the vacation of Edgeview Court, which lies between Lot Two, Block Five, Sorum subdivision, Lot One, Block Four A, Sorum subdivision, and Track Four, Sorum's addition, all in Section Nine of Mapleton Township. I do have just a quick, couple photos here. This is just the intersection we're looking at. Here is the right-of-way. The neighboring property to the south uses this right-of-way as their driveway. So basically, when we, when they, if this were to get vacated and they were to replat, this driveway would be, would be on the property to the south. As we walk down the driveway, this is where we run into the, the structure that was built in the right-of-way back in the early nineties. And so that would eliminate the property lines, readjusting the property lines would eliminate that being in the right-of-way, it would be on private property. And then this is the propane tank that's on the northwest side of that property. That would, is currently, where the property lines are is probably around this row of trees, so the propane tank isn't on the residence property, and so replating that property would eliminate that issue as well. So just going back to this map here, the white lines are the current property lines. The yellow line is where the current right-of-way is, and the red lines are basically the proposed lines that they would be coming in to replat if this vacation goes through. So if there's any questions for me at this time, I could answer those. Also, the petitioner is here. If you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Dustin. Anybody have any questions for Dustin? This is a public meeting, so we would like to have anyone that's a proponent come and speak if they wish. Is there any proponents who want to speak about this topic? Nobody's moving, so we will ask if there's any opponents who wish to make comments. No one's coming forward. Be looking for a motion. Move to approve the vacation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the vacation. Any other comments, questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Dustin.
Item number eleven is consider a motion to approve the 2013 Item number eleven is consider a motion to approve the 2013-2014 malt beverage renewal applications in Minnehaha County. The following on-off sale malt beverage renewal applications have been received in the auditor's office. They are for Thirty-Eight Roadhouse, Baltic Corner, Bottoms Up, Buffalo Training Post, Chasers, DJ's Bar, Friendlies of Baltic, Hunter's Point Shooting Club, Hewsett Speedway, I-90 Speedway, Midway Service, Northern Links Golf Course, Ultimate Golf, Pump &amp; Pack, Renner Corner, State Line Casino, Strawbale Winery, American Legion Post 307, and Wildwater West. The following on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine license that were received are for Crook's Gun Club, Sioux Empire Fair Association, and the Yogi Bear Camp Resort. The following package off-sale malt beverage license were received for Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats and Wall Lake Oil Company. All the applications have been reviewed by representatives of the Sheriff's Office, Planning and Zoning Department, and State's Attorney's Office, and there were no objections or violations reported. The action we are requesting today is to approve the 2013-2014 malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License renewal applications.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone have any questions about any of the applications?
Make a motion to approve them all with a comment.
Certainly. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
I'm just very happy that none of these places have been in violation this past year. I know that in years gone by, we've had other problems. I know that we check them, and so I'm very happy that we don't have any. I will say, I was at a place recently where they had a sign that they check anyone under forty, and they didn't ask me for an ID. But she did say that she's had a couple people that look kind of sketchy who didn't have driver's licenses at all, and she didn't sell anything to them. Anyway.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the list of applications. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number twelve is review of proposals for inmate phone video visitation systems in Minnehaha County Jail and Community Corrections Center, and consider recommendation for contract award. The proposals were received on April seventeenth, 2013. Warden Jeff Gromer.
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. Just here today, I ask you to review the proposal offered by IC Solutions, and we'll be making a recommendation to sign a contract with IC Solutions concerning the jail inmate telephone visitation contract. We currently have a contract with a company by the name of Securus that was formerly known as Evercom. That company, that contract has been in place since roughly nineteen ninety-eight. In April of this year, we received the proposals through the RFP process from various companies, and after reviewing the proposals and a couple of demonstrations, we are confident that IC Solutions is the best, offered the best proposal, and has the best contractor arrangements for both the county and the inmates. The contract is for three years, and then will automatically renew on a yearly basis unless either participant, us or IC Solutions, would provide ninety days' notice of an intent to end the contract. IC Solutions will provide and maintain the equipment. Some of the other things of note in the contract were IC Solutions will provide a, or work with us on providing an interface with our current jail management software system, which is a substantial piece of the puzzle. The fees associated with IC Solutions were the most, again, the most reasonable for both the county and the inmates. There are no surcharges, per se, with IC Solutions' proposal. The limited number of fees consists of a $2.49 collect call billing statement fee, or a $7.90 prepaid service fee. And the only other fee associated would be a $2.99 refund fee. Beyond those fees, the only cost to the inmates would be twenty-five cents per minute for phone calls, which they'll pay the county for the term of the initial contract, forty-three percent commission rate on that. And the video visitation would consist of a thirty-five cent per minute video visitation fee, which we will receive a fifty percent commission on those. Again, of the proposals we reviewed, those were the most reasonable for the county and the inmates as well. IC Solutions was very confident in their estimates, and will be guaranteeing us a commission based off a $400,000 gross revenue amount, which comes in roughly at $170,000 for the county. Our 2012 revenue amounts were just a little over $115,000.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone have any questions for the warden?
Commissioner Barth? Warden Gromer, you and I briefly discussed the pending FCC regulation of this part of the prison industry. And you mentioned that ICC is fully competent or is understanding that issue and ready to help us on it?
Absolutely. It was discussed in their proposal, and the fee structure with IC Solutions is very reasonable with the lack of the surcharges and the straight minimum rate.
And we're not making enough money on our share of these sales to cover the cost of incarceration, are we?
No.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll just make one. I think that when the contract I looked at was reviewed, there's a significant change in the guaranteed revenue that we're receiving from IC Solutions. So this is a very wonderful deal for us, because the percentage of increase is frankly very significant. So we're thankful for that. Any other comments? If not, I'd be looking for a motion.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, I'm assuming, to approve the contract with IC Solutions. Any other questions? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, on this issue, I was just reading this week that the FCC is looking at making, as regulating this, to make it more just and reasonable nationwide. And I would like us to consider whether we should write a letter to the FCC explaining our position on things. I think we're running this well enough, and we don't need them to tell us from Washington, D.C., how to do this.
Any other questions? Any comments for Jeff? Obviously not. For right now, we'll move ahead, and we'll reconsider item number thirteen.
Consider a bid award for County Highway 142 pavement restoration and concrete joint repair, and authorize the chairman to sign contracts. Bids opened May twenty-ninth, 2013. DJ Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Pursuant to your authorization, we opened bids on May twenty-ninth for the concrete joint repair. The engineer's estimate for the base bid was four-hundred-and-thirty thousand, and for the alternate was a hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Bids were received by two different contractors, the lower of which was TNR Contracting, three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and five cents for the base bid, and alternate A was a hundred-and-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars and eighty cents, for a total of four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. And today, we're requesting your approval to have the chairman sign the contract with TNR Contracting for the four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents to award the base bid and alternate A. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Any questions for DJ?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion, second. I've just got one question. Can you tell me a little more about what alternate A is? And then I'd also like to know what the proposed estimate was on this project for this particular function?
Yes. The alternate A, well, the base bid includes the concrete joint repair of its, of the main, mainline roadway. Alternate A includes the asphalt shoulder, a milling and overlay of that, that shoulder. Originally, when we scoped the project, we did not consider the asphalt shouldering work, and so we included that as an alternate, because we knew it would be sizable. However, we did also know that we would be able to perform that work on our own if we wanted to. But we figured we would bid it as an alternate, just to see what the price would be, a very competitive price at a hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. And so that's what the alternate A is. The engineer's estimate, four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, and then with the alternate, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand. We had previously submitted a list of projects to you guys that included this as five-hundred-thousand dollars. And so this four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand and change is less than the five-hundred-thousand dollars that we had estimated that it would cost us.
I can follow up with that. Where does that put us, even if this project's below the estimate? Where are we at aggregately, if you will, for the total project?
Overall, we are still significantly lower than what we have budgeted for 2013. We have a list of projects that we are trying to prepare bids for and get through the bid process. If we do end up getting through all of those, overall, our estimates, I think originally were shown as eighty-three thousand dollars over our budgeted amount, and we're a couple hundred thousand dollars less than that right now aggregately.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for DJ? If not, be looking for, no, we have a motion and a second, I'm sorry. If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item fourteen is to authorize the chairman to sign amendment to joint security protection agreement for air guard security between the South Dakota Department of Military and Veterans Affairs and Minnehaha County. Keith Winyah.
Good morning, Commissioner. Keith Winyah, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department, Division Supervisor. Presenting an addendum to the contract between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Department of Veterans and Military Affairs. This addendum adjusts the contract funding from nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, three hundred dollars to eight-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, three hundred dollars. Just a difference of forty thousand dollars. Should be noted that this deduction funding will not impact the air guard division in Minnehaha. So is there any question?
So you don't have any questions for Keith? If not, I'd look for a motion.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item sixteen is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Department of Social Services, Division of Child Protection, and an agreement between Minnehaha County and Luke Yellowrobe for qualified expert witness services for Indian child welfare cases. Kirsten Kepner.
Thank you, Commissioners. Before you this morning, we have two proposed contracts for your consideration. Under federal law, Minnehaha County is required to have an expert witness in cases involving the Indian Child Welfare Act and placement of Native American children in abuse and neglect cases. Our current arrangement is that the Department of Social Services with the state provides funding to Minnehaha County under contract, and Minnehaha County contracts with another independent contractor to provide that qualified expert witness service for those cases. Both the Department of Social Services and the contractor have proposed contracts for your consideration. Essentially, that fee is passed through from the Division of Social Services to us, and then the county pays it out to the contractor. So it is revenue and expense neutral to the county, and we would ask that you approve that proposed contract as written. It's in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the year running May first to April thirtieth of 2014.
Thank you, Kirsten. Any questions for Kirsten? I believe this is a contract we've had in place for a number of years, so.
Correct. The only change to this is a slight increase in the amount of the contract given to us by the Department of Social Services.
Thank you. If not, any questions? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the contract with DSS. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item seventeen is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014-2016 labor agreement between Minnehaha County and the Minnehaha County Deputies Association. Ken McFarland.
Morning, Ken. Morning, Commissioners. I am pleased to report that we have concluded our negotiations with the Minnehaha County Deputies Association, and we have reached tentative agreement with them on a new contract for the 2014-through-2016 contract years. You have a copy of that tentative agreement that's been negotiated in your packets, and your copy that you have shows all the changes that were made to the current contract, either with overstrikes and/or underlines. I've also been notified that the Deputies Association has taken the contract to their membership, and that they have given approval to that agreement, and the president of the association has in fact signed off on their part of the contract that Cindy has sitting on her desk right now. The major points of that contract are it will be a three-year contract, and it's through, excuse me, 2014 through the last payroll period in December of 2016. As far as wages go, the association has guaranteed a minimum one percent increase in salary, or that, or that is approved by the county commission for other employees of the county, whichever is greater for the 2014 contract year. There is no guaranteed increase for the 2015 or 2016 contract years, and the step increase is guaranteed for the 2014 contract year. In addition, and that we will agree to complete a wage study by May one, 2014, at which point the contracts can be reopened for wage discussions, wage discussions only during the 2015 and 2016 contract years, for those years. In addition, and that we've switched out the President's Day holiday, as was previously in the old contract, in favor of adding the day after Thanksgiving, as we recognize holiday, and we had some other minor changes in the language regarding the holiday schedule. We've increased the shift premium pay from forty cents per hour to fifty cents per hour for all regular duty hours worked between six P.M. and six A.M. And we've also made some minor language changes in our grievance procedures, mainly having to do with timeframes for dealing with and answering grievances. The clothing allowance, there were some minor changes made to the clothing allowance section to incorporate the new corporal position, and some minor adjustments in the clothing and equipment issued for corporals and for the jail staff. And I do want to also point out that the current clothing allowance, it does increase by the same amount of the increase that you agreed to for wages for each year of the contract. Those were the major changes in the contract. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank not only the county's negotiation team, which consisted of Michelle Boyd, myself, and Carrie Dever, and that, but the Deputies Association team as well, with Ryan Qualseth, and Brian Moore, and Joe Bosman. And that it was, I found it to be a very productive negotiation session with those individuals. I know the president of the association is behind me right now in the other room, and he's just simply sitting there, in case there's any questions you might have of him. But I don't know if the fact that we both agreed early on that we weren't going to have lawyers sitting in with us during the negotiation session helped move things along in a nice pace, but it's certainly moved along very well. And I am grateful for Kirsten, though, for reviewing the contracts and giving us his insight on the contracts. But we didn't make them sit through the sessions. So with that, we would recommend, unless you have any other questions, we would recommend that you authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone have any questions or comments? I would just like to reiterate what you said about the team, both sides, Ryan's leadership with the Deputies Association and that particular group, and yours, and Michelle, and Carrie's input frankly made this feel like the most informal and friendly negotiations that I've seen in the last couple of years that I've been around. And we really appreciate the association's support, and frankly, this makes the whole budgeting process for us a lot easier to have this done this early in the year. So thank you for all your work, because it does make a huge difference to all of us from a labor standpoint and from frankly, a relationship standpoint. So thank you. And Ryan, thank you. Could I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments, questions? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Thank you.
Item 18 is to authorize the chairman to sign contract between Minnehaha County and Beatty Forseth, HVAC, to replace two unit heaters in the WH Lion Fairgrounds Expo Building. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, your 2013 building fund contained an allocation of $140,000 to do some repair replacement and the balancing of the air handling system in the Expo Building. You've already awarded three contracts to do that separate work, and those contracts totaled out of that 140, $129,585. In addition, I will remind you that that allocation also has $20,000 for asphalt work to be done out at the fairgrounds, and the building committee has considered a change on that because of the asphalt work done by the city to allow the fairgrounds to use that money for some other building purposes out there. During the work for the air handling system, we identified two unit heaters, two existing unit heaters out there that also needed to be replaced. And that Beatty Forseth, who's also doing some of the work out there, has forwarded a contract to replace those two heaters at a cost of $6,400. That $6,400 is still well within the budgeted amount for the total work associated with the air handling system of under 140, and we would recommend that you authorize the chairman to sign that contract. We're bringing these contracts to you for this project because this is out of the building fund, and of course, the county contains, maintains control over the expenditures of those funds out at the fairgrounds.
Any questions for Ken? Mr. Pecus?
Are they pretty rock solid that there aren't going to be any change orders here? Because the change order indicates they get the cost of work plus 20% overhead and profit.
Correct. In my conversations with Scott on that very thing, he has assured me that this is it. For this contract, this is it.
Other questions for Ken? If not, I would be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
And there's a second? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 19 is to authorize the chairman to sign a request for amendment to grant number 1112-302 Southeast Technical Institute Workforce Development Block Grant for CDL Training Program. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, last year, you had agreed to sponsor a community development block grant for workforce development project over at the Southeast Technical Institute. That training program was for the Class A CDL Certification Program. The original grant was for $120,000, and it allowed for the purchase of an additional semi-tractor for the training program, and scholarships to allow an additional 20 individuals to complete that CDL Certification Program. That program appears to have been wildly successful, and we have now have an amendment that's being brought to us from CICOG, who's doing the grant administration for this, to amend this grant to provide an additional $110,850 for 30 more scholarships for individuals to complete the CDL Certification Program, and it extends the grant period for another six months in order to complete that certification. So, we have a copy of the request for amendment and the proposed budget, and CICOG is strongly recommending that you authorize the chairman to sign the grant amendment to allow the program to move forward.
Questions?
Just a comment. I just think this is such a wonderful opportunity, considering there is always a shortage of truck drivers, and truck drivers are the backbone of America that move our stuff from state to state, and we need them. And the fact that we can have a scholarship program for to put 30 more drivers on the road is wonderful.
Other comments? I would just like to make one. Last week, when I left early to go to Brandon to the Marmon Ribbon Cutting Grand Opening, whatever you want to call it, the president from Marmon made comments about the cooperation of government with their need for truck drivers, welders, engineers, and they're going to be hiring up to 250 new employees in the next 12 months or longer, a little longer, and those are all very high-paying positions as far as bringing the wages up a little bit. And he commented about the fact that he felt very comfortable with the fact that we would be able to provide the workforce that he really needed. He had a couple of the comments, I won't say publicly, about how fast government moves, but in South Dakota, he complimented the fact that this got done in a hurry, and that's one of the reasons why they moved here. And this is going to be a huge economic value to the region, and frankly, to the whole country, because he is an international company with an amazing story to tell. So, it's a great partnership, and I obviously will support the training program. Any other comments? If not, looking for a motion to approve the CDL Training Program with CICOG?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
So, anyone have any liaison reports this morning? If not, we'll go to new business. Any new business? Ken, would you like to make some comments about the budget process that we're getting started with?
You bet. Thank you, Commissioner. All of you have a copy of your timetables that you have indicated that you are available to conduct budget hearings that are coming up. I think Commissioner Benega and I just briefly discussed before the meeting, you know, some of those proposed times that we could slot in based on your availability in order to begin that process. And I know Commissioner Benega, you have a sheet of some of the times that we talked about, that we'd like to at least talk to you folks about and make sure that we get on the calendar so we can start scheduling budget hearings. One of the things, once we determine that schedule of when you're going to meet, will be very helpful for us, is just some basics. I'm assuming the commission would like us to bring in all the departments for budget hearing, like what we've done in the past couple of years. Before, we used to concentrate on only those departments that had increases or significant increases, but the commission really shifted away from that philosophy and just wanted to talk to everybody. The other issue for me as far as scheduling is your stand on the outside agency requests, and that, you know, calling them in, you know, do you want to schedule some time for the agencies to come in, and we can keep it as long as or as short as what you want. And then we hope to use towards the end of the budgeting session, a time block where you can discuss strictly building issues and the capital improvement schedule. So, Commissioner Benega has outlined sometimes, and that we'd like to discuss that with you to make sure that those are good for the rest of you, and we will start the scheduling process for the hearings.
Thank you, Ken. When we reviewed this, we tried to do it so that there was probably only one session a week, starting the week of June 17th. We, in my estimation, and Ken's memory is that last year, we had nine sessions, and we did address all the department's needs. We suggested that they make a written presentation to us that we could read beforehand, and that they not go ahead and reiterate and redo that in the hearings, but let us just ask the questions, and if there was any changes that we had concerns about, we would be happy to go through them in an organized manner. We did invite all the outside agencies that went through the applications process. We did change the applications this year, based on my experiences with needing more information about expenses, not just the revenue side of an agency's budget, and also about the growth in units of service and all those kinds of things. So, we've asked them for more information. It's the same kind of format that United Way uses, which is very efficient and productive. And then as what Ken indicated toward the end, and probably the last session before we get involved in maybe some finalization of the budget, is to address the building projects, because that obviously is a significant dollar amount, and we're going to have to prioritize some of those needs at that point. I'll just give you briefly what I have put together, and my rationale was, again, doing one meeting at the most, if possible, on a weekly basis, but more importantly, getting as many people involved from the commission as we could, and I know that that's like herding sheep some days. So, we have, on June 18th, the evening meeting from 6:00 to 9:00 was the proposed time. We'll go to the next week of June 26th. That will be an all-day session on Wednesday, the 26th. That'll give us three sessions in a row, but that will frankly complete a lot of the process. We don't have anything for the week of July 1st. Obviously, there's a holiday in there, so there's going to be some extended vacations, I'm guessing. And then we go to July 8th. Again, an all-day session on Wednesday, July 10th.
I'm sorry. I...
Wait, what was the 8th?
The 8th is an all-day.
Okay.
Are we doing the 8th all day? I thought we were just doing the 10th.
Yep.
I didn't use that one, because I came up with 9 without that one.
Okay. So, it's on the 10th.
I can change this if you'd like. I have it the 10th, starting at 9:00 and going all the way to 9:00 that evening. And then, again, that's June 10th, which is a Wednesday... July 10th, I'm sorry. And then the last two sessions would be on, in July 17th, in the evening, is the building committee one from 6:00 to 9:00, and then on the 18th, when we're all available for a change, on Thursday from 9:00 to 11:30 will be the wrap-up and try to get as much of the proposed budget wrapped up and put together by July 18th, which gives us then time for the auditor's office to put all those numbers together. And again, that's just a proposal. We're very flexible, but right now, I think that would work. That does give us nine sessions. So, anybody have any comments, concerns? Commissioner Pecus?
Just the opt-out drop-dead date is... Isn't that the 15th of July? So, it looks like we have an all-day on the 10th, and if there's, for whatever reason, a reason to opt-out, and I'm not saying we are, but I'm just saying that if that decision is going to be made, it would have to be completed by the 10th, which is that all-day session we have.
Any other comments?
We would use that first session on the 18th, and that that's typically what we would use for our initial budget presentation and saying, here are the numbers, here are the percentages of increase, this is where we see increases in personnel, in the outside agencies, et cetera. So, we present all that. I don't anticipate that should take more than an hour to go through that info, so it'd be my intent to start some budget hearings with departments probably yet that night, you know, that very first night after the initial budget overview session with you. And then, at this juncture, I think what I'm going to shoot for is on the 26th, is to start the department schedules, you know, at that point, and fit in as many as we can during that, and I'll just adjust the schedule as far as how much time to allocate for each based on the requests that we're seeing. And then we will, on the 10th, I'd like to use later in that afternoon and into the evening for the agency requests and that. And then, the 17th, we'll use for the budget, or the building fund and the capital improvement. And then, like you said, on the 18th, we will, that's kind of a wrap-up session to catch up anything we need to do.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner...
On the 18th, I would love to be here, but my brother from Fiji is flying in with his family at 5:30, and if that's delayed, certainly we'll be here.
Well, we'll be meeting at 9:00 in the morning.
9:00 in the morning.
Oh, I thought it was the 18th that I couldn't make.
It says all available.
Oh, okay, I'll be there. Yeah. Sorry.
Good. No, no problem.
Question?
Commissioner Kelly?
If, I mean, I like what you proposed, and if we settle on it, could we do an outlook? Whatever, an outlook report, the one that goes into our calendar.
Right.
And then also, could you give us a synopsis of what you just said in writing so we can look and see, but we'll have it in our calendar and we can look and see to that.
Yep, I'll be happy to.
And then, one other question.
Certainly.
On the outside agencies, was the indication to bring them all in, or could we select those that we want to talk to? I mean, there was an awful lot of requests there. There were brand-new ones, there were some that were way over the top, and we might want to take a couple, three or four, I don't know, and say, hey, we would like you to come in and present, otherwise, do like we did last year, where we just looked at them. It's up...
Ken had a comment, but I think I'll follow up when you're done.
Well, as far as new requests, I think it's what I remember, and we have it on Dropbox for you right now. All the outside agencies are there. I think as far as new requests, there's only two or three, and that as far as new agencies that I haven't had requests before.
But there were some big increases.
There were some big increases, and that, of course, one of the biggest increases is simply a shift from one budget to the outside agency budgets, and that's the IVC contract, and that with Carroll Institute. I mean, that's presently in my budget, and I'm for 2013 as a supplement because of, you know, the date of that agreement, and we're looking to move that out as a standalone on its own. And that, you know, typically, in the past, we've allocated 10, 15 minutes for each of the agencies to make a presentation and a pitch, and I can tell you, you buy yourself some enormous goodwill by allowing that time in order to have them at least make that presentation, and we can limit it if you want.
So, what did we do last year?
You called them all in.
Okay. But we only gave them, what, an hour or something for the whole group, or...
Oh, no, like I said, it worked out to about 10, 15 minutes per agency, but we can, we'll break it, we can limit it to as much as what you would like to do.
What we did last year, I thought worked. So...
That's what I was going to say, is that I thought last year went fairly reasonable.
It did.
And everybody had an opportunity to make their presentation, and maybe some of the decisions weren't made till the final day, but we all heard from each one, and we became aware of some of the things that they do for us.
And one of the things we'll just have to reiterate as we go through this, because you're really doing, you know, two really long-day sessions, I mean, they're going to have to make themselves available to fit your schedule, and then, and I mean, we don't have a lot of options for other times that don't work for them, and that these are the days that we're doing it. And if they can't meet those days, then perhaps they don't have a hearing, because unless I can make an accommodation on one of the other open days.
Other comments? The other thing that I would say, if you remember right, last year, Monty Wanenbach and IT made some significant changes in the information that we received. He's continued to enhance that. We have the Dropbox for the outside agencies. We've got history now on our laptops for, I think, going back, was it three years?
At least.
At least, plus the current year and the proposed budget for 2014. So, the information is all electronic. It will give us plenty of opportunity to look at that stuff before we get into the public conversation. So, we have all the facts, all the history. It should go relatively quickly.
Now, like I said, in your budget material now, you have all, in Dropbox, you should have all of the outside agency applications that have been submitted, along with the, it's a recap sheet of all the requests and, you know, the increases that we've seen. And that by next week, you know, towards the middle of next week, we've got all the budgets in, we've got the department's budget numbers plus their narratives. We will be loading those particular sheets into Dropbox. They're not there yet, and that because we're just, you know, just wrapping that up as far as the collection, but they should be in there by the middle of next week before you start your hearing processes. We will have those, so we'll, you'll have almost a week to start looking at some of that stuff before you even step foot into the budget hearing.
Thank you. I think we're ready to just go ahead and publish that and make that happen.
Yep, we'll do that.
And ahead of time, Darlene and Rich, we're sorry for abusing you during that process, so just let us tell you right up front, we appreciate the fact that you do need to put in a lot of extra time. Any other questions? If not, any old business. We do need to go into executive sessions... We do need to go into executive sessions for a legal briefing with attorneys and personnel issue, so I...
Move the turn and then to exec session for legal briefing and personnel.
Second.
We have a motion to go into exec session for legal briefing and personnel. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.